Thank you. On the agenda tonight is an item regarding borrowing for the city. And our city charter requires that whatever the city goes out to borrow money above a certain amount will require a whole public hearing prior to. So that's the subject of this hearing. And the whole question about what the city's going to borrow for and how much is going to be something that's going to be discussed over a number of meetings. So certainly, tonight will not be the first and last words on the items of the bond issue. So I'm afraid that the list of items for the bond issue didn't get in your agenda package, so I'm going to pass it up now. One day. I'm going to put extra copies here. Obviously, I don't have enough for everyone, but if people are here for the bond issue... As you can see from the list, there are items that are highlighted in yellow. Those are the items that come with the recommendation of the city administration. They're all up for grabs, except for two. The first two items on the bond issue list, the property reval and the runway work at the airport. Those two projects have already started. So we're starting to spend money on a bond issue that's coming up this winter. And so the item on the agenda tonight is the declaration of intent. And what we're required to do under the law is if we spend money for a bond issue prior to actually getting the money, we're required to approve that declaration of intent, which is Resolution Number 155 on your agenda tonight. So as I said, the items on the agenda are very much, the items on the list are very much up for discussion, except for the two, airport and property reval. So I'd be happy to answer questions that any of the council has.
Mike, when do you plan to have the bond issue put together?
Well, the bottom of this list shows a timetable, so we're hoping, to answer your question, that we would have the bond issue in February, late January, February, and actually receive the funds in the spring.
So you want to do it before we start a budget process?
Correct. Yeah. So we know what impact it will have on our budget for next year.
Okay. Mike, a 10-year bond plan?
I don't think we've gotten that far in our discussion about, I think that some of the, it would probably be longer than 10, wouldn't it?
I would say 20. Some of the stuff would get paid off in 10, but the runway and all that is more of a 20-year asset.
And if we had a 20-year bond for 4.5 million essentially, the dog in the name will pay out of what, half a mil?
Uh, probably a little more than that.
Little more than half a mil.
About around 400.
And what are we paying each year on our current outstanding bond?
On all of our bonds?
Yeah.
That I will have to look up.
I mean, it just seems to me, in light of the events of the last 24 hours, financial commitments are a little shakier.
From the state to the city?
Yeah.
Could well be. Could well be. It's a predicament we've lived with the last four years, of course. Right. But if we approved the bond issue, as you say, for 4.5 million, it would be, I think the number we had figured was around 400,000 a year, a little bit more than half a mil. So that's why I said in my opening remarks that these items are all up for discussion and debate, except for the first two, which this council, of course, authorized a few months back.
Our debt service this year is 1.6 million.
1.6 million, so we've essentially decreased it to about 2 million a year.
Yeah, I think so. I think that's a fair, that's the...
But there isn't so many being freed up by the 2016?
No. Actually, our bond schedule does not free us up any funds until 2021.
It's not about the TIF.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have in 2016, a TIF that expires that will bring new revenue in that we're currently paying out, and that amount is around 400,000, 430,000. So we're looking at that as a balance for the debt service demand.
Mike, is there going to be a time for us to go through each of these items?
Absolutely.
Okay. So what exactly do you need? Is the council voting tonight on this?
The only thing that we're asking the council to vote tonight is on this declaration of intent.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so that by law, we're in the clear in terms of spending some funds prior to the bond issue, and we're required to do that within 60 days?
60 days of money actually being spent. And so we have the runway and the reval that we've already started work on and we've cut checks for.
So I expect at your next council meeting, again, for anyone here who's interested in bond issues, we'll have a full and complete listing of every single item. So for instance, Public Works, 1.6 million, well, what's in that number? We have a listing of every piece of equipment, and that's the next meeting when I thought we would get into that.
Are we going to be looking at public break into a 10-year and 20-year bond? Because I'm looking at, you know, property valuation and equipment. I mean, that's, that stuff that's probably going to depreciate. I mean, we're looking at, you're not looking at a 20-year bond. Your equipment's gone by the end of that.
Right.
You do one bond, but you pay some of the stuff off at a different rate than the other side. So you determine, within, like, within the last bond we did, there was four different timeframes that we paid stuff off. That police station, I believe, was over 25 years, so they amortize it that way.
Okay. So, yeah, within the bond itself, they schedule it so that if something's only going to last five years, you pay it off within five years, within the bond.
Anyone have any other questions?
Any questions? I know that there's also someone here who approached me on one of the items, Chris Gons. In terms of the traffic signal to the airport road, it's an item that we've discussed a number of times, where the airport road meets Kennedy Memorial Drive. If you're coming out, trying to turn left on Kennedy Drive, very difficult. Very, very difficult. And so that's a subject for consideration, adding to the bond. And I know that, Chris, if you wanted to just get up and explain a little bit of that, we could do it at this meeting. Now's the time, probably.
Would you please, the council, we can do it tonight, or we can do it at one of the other meetings?
At one of the other meetings, when we go into a full and complete discussion of everything.
Why don't we do that?
Okay. But the point is, you've gotten written requests from five or six different businesses on the airport road?
Yes. The, um, that interchange has become much more busy. There's a lot more activity going on with trucking companies and pine tree waste and Bell Simon's. And speaking with them, their concerns really are about being able to turn left, and they get complaints all the time from their customers who are running out of there. And when we remodeled our General Motors building, we got rid of the curb cut on Kennedy Memorial Drive, which also has impacted that section as well. Not to mention that, you know, we have a methadone clinic that's doing a lot more work down that road as well as our own business. Even though we have a body shop, we'd like to see less accidents.
This is all we need to do then, right?
I, yes, I think it is, and I want to remind people that over the next two council meetings, for sure, we're going to be able to go down through each and every one of these. Okay? Thank you.
The hearing is over. The regular meeting will start in about five minutes.
See if we can turn it even. Finally working. Been out all day.
It's hard.
Actually, no, actually, because the truck was 35.
Thank you, driving a truck without breaking anything. That's a tough truck.
Now, we got the, Mr. Matt. We could pass one more time. There we go. Okay, 32, yeah.
Every last thing.
Honestly. I mean, this one. Yeah, you know where that came from? I mean, that's something a year old. Use it. Just change a head cover.
Voices are just signature.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Is that great? All those in favor? We have two members missing tonight, so we just barely have a quorum. At this point in the meeting, we usually allow anyone who has an item they want to discuss that's not on the agenda, now's the time to do it. Does anyone have anything they want to discuss, other than what's on the agenda?
Yes.
Say thank you. Mike Scott, I'm here for the wonderful folks of July. I know Matt's not here, but I know Mark is. Hopefully, you can relay the message to him. We'd like to thank the city for using their 20-by-30 tent that are last weekend for our carnival, "Way Hand," a concert walk down at the, uh, Fort Hare Park, and also big thank you to Matt and his crew for coming down, setting it up, and picking it up after the event. And also to the city for letting us see you.
Here's Scott. Anyone else have anything? First item on the agenda under all business?
Read by title only.
Second. All those in favor?
I don't want to provide you for payment of credit enhancement agreement payments.
Move to a down.
Second. Discussion. We talked about this at the last meeting, but, um, all those in favor? Do you want to take the third and final read by title only? Second.
All those in favor?
All those in favor? Excuse me. Yes.
I'd order providing for payment of credit enhancement agreement payments.
Move to a down.
Second. Okay, discussion. All those in favor by roll please?
Thank you. Council Studdard?
Yes.
Council LaHobbit?
Yes.
Council Winslow?
Yes.
Council Donald?
Yes.
Council Boucher?
Yes.
Who is five in favor and zero opposed?
Thank you. How's your new business? Resolution 153-24.
A resolution providing for authorizing issuance of a vicarious license to A&amp;J LLC doing business as Thai Bistro. Be resolved by the city council of the city of Waterville, acting as municipal officers as follows, that the city council hereby authorize the issuance of a vicarious license to A&amp;J LLC doing business as Thai Bistro, 1, um, sorry, 147 Main Street.
Move to a down.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Resolution 154, that's...
A resolution providing for authorizing the issuance of a liquor license to A&amp;J LLC doing business as Thai Bistro. Be resolved by the city council of the city of Waterville, acting as municipal officers as follows, that the city council hereby authorize the renewal of a liquor license to A&amp;J LLC doing business as Thai Bistro, 147 Main Street.
Move to a down.
Second. Any discussion?
Just wanted to assure, we have a good crowd here this evening, so to just give you a heads up, just across the street, we will have Thai Bistro opening very shortly. And the last council meeting, we had the owner and the chef who were here. They did a super job, really getting us very interested in making sure that we had over there and enjoying it well. Indian food coming downtown today.
Any other comments? All those in favor? Thank you. Resolution 155. Read by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you. A resolution providing for declaration of intent for bond issuance and general capital funds reassignment.
Move to a down.
Second. This is the item that we have the hearing about.
I just want to point out a couple of things. One, two, three, four, fifth, whereas is where it mentions the requirement that we need to take action within 60 days of spending line. On the back of the sheet is the, at the top, the maximum principal amount of debt expected to be. So we're not committed to this 4.5 million. It's an amount that's provided at this point in the game, and before any bond issue is approved, you, the council, have to approve an order, which requires three votes. So you approve this tonight as a declaration, and then what follows is three additional votes on whatever amount you decide to have for launch. Well, you can combine the second and the third in one vote.
Charter, two votes.
Is that right?
No, the new charter might happen, but it...
No, the new charter doesn't take effect till February, not till January.
Oh, we're doing it on the eve of December. Never mind that.
July 1. The new charter was passed yesterday, so there were a number of revisions in your right. That's one of those that require the changes upon the order, the voting for an order from three votes to two. But when I talked to Bill Lee today, he reminded me that the charter doesn't take effect until July 1. Unless it's an election-related issue, if we were to have some kind of special election before July 1, and it affected that, those sections of the charter that have been changed, it would take effect.
You've got to stack it to the fiscal year or something?
Yes, for some reason, the charter is tied to the fiscal year in terms of amendments. I'm not, I'm not clear as to why, but that's what he said.
Any other questions? Any other comments? All those in favor? Thank you. Resolution 156-154. Read by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
A resolution providing for contract renewal for dispatch services.
Move to a down.
Second.
Our police department currently provides dispatching for these six towns, Albion, China, Rome, Belgrade, Clinton, Sydney, in addition to Oakland, Winslow, and Delta Anul. So our dispatch at the police department provides a lot of services. We have contracts with the dispatch for these six towns, well, and also with Winslow, China, and Delta Anul, too. This is an annual renewal, but the change in this proposed contract is to make it from a one-year contract to a three-year, so you don't have to do this every year.
Have we increased annual fee to 20, whether we talked about?
Yes. The annual fee increased 5% in the year we're in now. The three-year contract has language that says increases may be requested by the city during the three-year period.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Resolution 157.
An ordinance providing for adoption of the 2014 City of Waterville Comprehensive Plan, being enacted by the city council of the city of Waterville, acting as municipal officers as follows. For the 2014 City of Waterville Comprehensive Plan, as revised through October 3, 2014, having been approved by the Waterville Planning Board and found complete and consistent with the Grove Management Act by the Maine Department of Agriculture, Conservation, and Forestry, hereby replaces the 1997 City of Waterville Comprehensive Plan.
Move to a down.
Second. Any discussion? Do we all have copies of the confidential?
Uh, no.
I thought we all seen one.
All right.
It's online.
It's online. We will, prior to your next meeting, we should get each one of you a paper copy, for sure, so we'll do that. It's a lot.
I, for myself, reduce the paper. I went online, so I'm fine.
Online? Online?
I would like...
Online? Forget that paper thing. One. Two. This is something that requires three votes, so tonight, if you decide, who'd be your first one?
I just comment for those who aren't part of this process. The Commissions of Plan was developed after a series of several meetings from business owners, Canadian members, city councilors, and a lot of work went to devising this plan. So I want to really thank Ann Beveridge, and everybody who worked with her, and I know Councilor Eric Thomas helped write it, and all the Canadian members who really put a lot into it. Because it really shows not only where we are today, but where we want to be. So if you, I really heard everybody took a line and made it, and to really see that we're not living just in here and now, we're really looking at Waterville and where we want it to be years from now. And so it's a really important document for us as a council to approve, but also for residents who live here to really take it to heart and make sure it holds accountable that we actually did it. I think that's a really good call for, for myself, but hopefully for all of us.
Any other comments? All those in favor? Order number 158-24. Read by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
An ordinance providing for amendment to Zelening, Article 2, Section 2 dot 1 dot 1.
Move to a down.
Second.
I'll ask Ann and our planner to help me if we have questions. This is the proposed amendment regarding the church, purchase of the property, Golden Alley property, and it's been to the planning board, so it's back to you. The memo attached describes the planning board action. Unless there are any questions that Ann or I can answer.
Is the projected use of this property?
I'm going to have to let someone answer that question.
We're using the, uh, the new property as our main sanctuary. We'll continue to keep the property at 60 West River Road for our school and daycare and other ministries as well. We've just outgrown our... We've just outgrown our existing property, and so we'll be using really both properties, but the new property, the Bowling Alley, 155, will be converted to our main sanctuary and to some auxiliary office space as well, uh, for the offices.
Will there won't be any residences here?
No.
You understand that property currently pays substantial taxes?
Absolutely, and you understand that.
Sarah?
Yes?
What? Was there any exploration as to when we could build? I mean, you've got some problems.
Yes.
Correct, yeah.
Is there enough problem to build everything you need for your?
No, we actually, uh, and that's a great question. We spent a significant amount of money to try to accomplish what we wanted to on the existing property. In fact, a few years ago, we purchased additional land from the State Department of Transportation to expand, uh, but we're very landlocked and simply can't do what we really need to do on that existing four-and-a-half acre parcel and have adequate parking space available in the building, uh, to do what we need to do to expand. And the, uh, the school particularly, with children needing to have some green space to play on, uh, would really restrict and limit what our children have right now, and it's already infringing upon them playing on gravel parking lot at times because the grassy area is just too small. So we're very limited, certainly realize it's a financial loss for the city, but we as a, as a church certainly believe that we're pouring back into the city and the community in multiple other ways to try to, uh, pour back into our city, what we don't want to take away from.
One of the problems that this council faces is just that situation. Waterville is the smallest city in the state in terms of area. It has almost the highest percentage of nonprofit properties, two colleges, a number of churches and hospitals. So we have a real serious problem with our taxes. And one thing we, we hope that some of these non-taxable industries we do will, uh, contribute in other ways to the city. We even attracted the colleges, what serves, things like that. So, legally, we can't, we can't charge taxes if that's how we do it. But any other way that you can think of to help the city financially that we very much appreciate?
Certainly would be just pleased to let you know, Mr. Chair, that this last year, uh, our church alone gave back to twenty-six other organizations that are non-religious organizations. That doesn't even begin to touch the amount of individuals that we help outside of the church in the community with heating needs, uh, food needs and others. But we're very proactive as a church at supporting the community financially and through resources of volunteer services, and so we recognize that, and we want you to know that it's our heart as a, a church in the city to certainly give back to the city, and we make that a very intentional effort through all of our volunteers.
Thank you. Any questions?
I would like to hear from Ann about the planning board's discussion. You talked about, we're being asked for residential deed, correct? But you offer an argument institutional?
Yes, I had sent it to the council and the council reported to the planning board as an institutional zone because I thought that was appropriate, but churches are allowed in both the institutional and the residential deed zone and planning board, but it's, it's neither to be zoned to residential deed rather than institutional. It, it does, certainly doesn't make much of a difference. Um, I think the church felt that perhaps there would be more flexibility as to how they use the property in an institutional zone, but the planning boards' thinking seemed to be that they could do pretty much whatever they wanted on that property as, as I'll make, as church-related. For example, they're, they're gonna have a cafe there, and, and churches aren't prepared for that.
Any other questions?
Do you want to be able to mention how long the property's been up for sale?
I don't know, it was, so, I can answer.
Could you go on?
I think it's probably over, uh, about two years.
And was there any, there was nobody wanting to buy the Bowling Alley?
None. And I'm actually still looking for, uh, someone to build a small Bowling Alley in Waterville because I very much want to see the Bowling Alley stay here. It's not going to be me. My time has passed. I wanted something that. Is it operating now? It is operating, and, uh, I'm gonna lease it back from the church until the end of April, so I fulfill my commitment that I have to my voters. And hopefully, fall in the summer, we can, uh, find someone to rehab one of the older buildings here in town and, uh, hold on to it. So if there's anybody in this community, anybody in this chamber that knows somebody that shouldn't be doing that, I'd love to work on helping with it.
I hate to see it go. That's, I mean, I need to see something where it goes. It's great for the winter, the kids and families, and we've done great work there.
I haven't heard names, and they don't work very well. Sorry. I couldn't hear you.
She said she'd hate to see it go because it's a great benefit to the community.
There's thousands of people that use that facility that hate to see it go, and, yeah, I'm getting a lot of rashes about that. Nobody's come up and said, hm, do it because you shouldn't be able to change your career at your age, you know, this time.
Ann, what's the current tax obligation to this property?
I checked with the assessor. The combined non-properity assessment as well as the personal property assessment is thirty-four thousand a year. So that's basically what we lose, thirty-four thousand a year once it becomes a property of the church. And according to the assessor, it will be tax exempt at that point.
Any other comments?
I, I've also, I have to acknowledge, I've gotten a couple of calls from constituents because, uh, calling out is my official person, Mark. And, uh, frankly, people are saying to me that we have too many nonprofits in town, our taxes are getting higher. They're already, they're getting higher. So I, I checked with the assessor to see what the tax assessment was. He tells me that between realty nonprofits and, um, personal property owned by nonprofits, and it probably doesn't even begin to look at the value of the personal property. And coldly, because between computers and everything else, there's probably millions of dollars worth of personal property that's non-taxable. But he said well over thirty percent of the city is non-taxable. And frankly, losing thirty-four thousand dollars a year so the Bowling Alley can become a church, although it's probably not legally correct to vote down, frankly, given our high bill rate, I'll vote up.
Counselor, I'll ask the counsel. Do we want to vote on this tonight or do we want to wait till we have a vote? What's your opinion?
Is everybody here, like, associated? You can hear from the public, probably, excited about what we're doing.
I suspect most of the people are in support of that.
I was, I'm, is there anybody here who wouldn't speak? That's probably, it'd be a good time.
No, good, you go first.
I just wanted to say that I was down there. I live at Temple Academy, um, which is a great church, and it's a wonderful church I have gone to attend it, but, um, you can't put a dollar value on what nonprofits do for our, for our community. Um, they help in many ways that we can't hardly afford financially. Granted, that tax dollars could go towards something, but we don't know what that would be spent on. Um, so at least we know what they're giving back to our community, and I really hope that we are moving this, and support this. My name is Greg.
My name is Greg, from, uh, I was born and raised at their hospital here in Waterville in nineteen sixty-four. My family has owned a residence at thirty-one Prospect Street for as long as I have been born. Uh, my father currently resides there, which I'm, uh, own the, on the property as well as his son. I grew up, uh, you know, I spent, I spent every summer growing up here in Waterville. I went to high school down in Holliday, but I went to college here at Thomas. And throughout my entire time, and then subsequently working for Dexter Shoe Company, living here in Waterville, traveling to Dexter, working for Alcon, and then now working for Bank of America and B and A in Belfast, uh, still this central lane is my home. The times I've been at Thomas and the times I've been around serving in this community and being part of Center Point Community Church, that property has, uh, it used to be residential property long before the Bowling Alley became around, uh, first and foremost. Uh, the tax base here in, in the City of Waterville, sure, a lot of things, business, climate change, a lot of businesses have come and gone, but granted, uh, the, I, I think the folks that are responsible for the economic development in this community have their work cut out for them, there's no question. But you cannot, as the gentleman said, you cannot put a value on, on what the, uh, the church and the, and the associated members of the church, uh, and constituents, what they've done to this community, the values in, in goods and services, time and effort, and what they've given back, uh, to the residents. My point being is, this, uh, this thirty-four thousand dollars, I would far guess the church over the time that, that the Bowling Alley's been there has given it back to the City of Waterville and then some, and many to many other surrounding communities. So I would, I would ask that this council seriously consider approving this, uh, you know, voting favorably in reference to this, uh, and remember that, uh, you know, that this, this is the heart of our communities, our people. And, and, and people working together, we can do a lot of things, and we're committed, I'm committed as a, uh, as a, you know, resident here in Waterville and a part homeowner and a member of this church and a member of this, uh, community. On the West River Road, I've seen the development, to, uh, to make sure that the City of Waterville is not slighted and that every, all the businesses are served. And the gentleman, the owner of the Bowling Alley, I commend you in your time of season to, uh, look at elsewhere. And quite honestly, if it's not on sale for two years and everyone is so certain about having a Bowling Alley here in town for our, our children, that why hasn't someone stepped up to the plate long before today and, uh, found the money, found the resources to make that happen and make it bigger and better? They haven't done that. So, uh, I, I think you have someone that's willing to keep that property in good shape, in good standing, and it's very important to, I would put forward, yes, thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Greg Dawes. I go with Center Point. Um, I sit on the board.
I do, I do a research for Waterville?
No, I don't.
Go ahead.
I live in City. Just down the road, uh, West River Road. Uh, just a quick point. I would like to point out that, um, my pastor, besides being pastor of our church, also was the chaplain for the police and fire department, and is another, uh, service to the community that you can't put a dollar figure on. Uh, there's so many hours that he puts into that, and, you know, when, when young kids stake their life, he gets called in when, uh, any situations like that that most people don't want to deal with, he's been called in. And, um, that's just one of the things that, that you can't put a dollar figure on. And I would urge the committee to, to not wait on this, to vote for it in the meeting tonight, so we can go see.
Is anyone else, you want me to add?
I have to say, I understand where people are coming from in regards to, um, that's, we're right, we can't put a dollar figure on a lot of things that are done in the community by, by nonprofits, by individuals, um, by other organizations. But the problem, I think, that this council faces is that we now sit in a budget climate that is so bad that we've had to come up with all sorts of ways to try to keep taxes low or at least where they're at, to the point where we had to institute the pay-as-you throw system just to try to save money. And it's not very well liked by some people, but it was something that we had to do in order to save money. And so now, I'm faced with thirty-four thousand dollars in reduced tax right there, and I can't put a dollar figure on that. It is thirty-four thousand dollars. If we have homeowners in this city now taking responsibility for another thirty-four thousand dollars, their taxes are going up, or we're looking for another way to save money. So is it, we cut a police officer, we cut another vital service in order to ensure that we can save this thirty-four, that we can save this thirty-four thousand dollars? So I would challenge, um, the supporters of this project, who are doing very good work, fine up thirty-four thousand dollars. And I think that this council would be looking a lot more favoritism.
May I address the chair? Uh, just one second. You're a parliament juror, you can talk.
Yes, sir.
There's a law, federal law, called the LUM law, and you may or may not be aware of that, but it's very important that you understand the ramifications of what we're talking about tonight. The Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act states that no government shall impose or implement a land use regulation in a manner that imposes substantial burden on the religious exercise of a person, including religious assembly or institution, unless the government can demonstrate that the imposition of the burden on that person, assembly, or institution, then it goes to all the reasons why. In summary, uh, I'm not sure if this council is aware of this, and I have a, the sixty-two page document here that you're certainly happy to look over, but it's, it's a federal law that basically mandates that local governments, organizations cannot impede upon us for these reasons that you're discussing tonight, because of taxes. This is a zoning issue.
Well, no one's stood up to you, sir.
Well, I just want to clarify, this is a zoning issue, it's not a tax issue.
No, we understand that. We're just throwing out this information so you know over and against us.
And I, I respect and understand, uh, please understand my heart, because we're, we're passionate about what we feel we've been called to do in our community. We certainly are willing to take that to the, the nth generation we need to, but we're hoping that we can just get support to do what we feel called and led to do in our community, certainly have the support of the owner of Bowling Alley, and that needs to sell this facility as well.
We, we understand that. To, where, where it comes from is, our constituents still are responsible to have voiced their opinions on this as well, so we have to explore our reality.
Absolutely. But this is not a tax issue. It's a zoning issue.
I understand that. And that's why you went to the zoning board.
Correct. So we're talking about changing the zone here, we're not really discussing the tax matter, I'm just, I think that's the reason to clarify, but also.
Well, we have to approve the change of zone.
Correct. But we don't have. The, the issue of taxes, though, if that comes into it, we're, we're in violation of federal law.
If we force you to pay taxes, certainly we would be, and we're not forcing you to serve.
But if you withhold the changing of zoning, uh, it's infringing upon that federal law as well.
There's all kinds of reasons why you would not allow the zone to change.
I, I, well, I haven't really heard any of those other reasons other than the one that came up tonight. Can I hear some more? There are more reasons? I've only heard taxes being the reason.
May I address the podium?
Sure, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm a main resident, not right now, but born, raised here a while ago. I'm sure. I'm sure you all are familiar with United Way, my pepe, Ray, and his select, all of those zones in the rear part of the home, as well as my heavy building that I built. To the gentleman that just said something about the federal laws and whatnot, I just think that you should give him an opportunity to read it. Because I am an accountant, and I know as an accountant you can make numbers work the way you want them. And I also know when we read federal regulations, which I am very familiar with because I am a local gas auditor, the department chair, we can also read them to read the way we want them to read. And I am unfamiliar with the area. I'm just coming back, all right? I've only been here for one week. And it kind of breaks my heart, to tell you guys the truth, to be back here. I don't find people very friendly, very nice, very...I think people seem angry, mad, jealous. And what turns on, makes me wonder what I need then is, no restaurant. You guys don't even want people to use your restaurant. But anyway, I'm interested in this project because I would like to come home. And it sounds like maybe I could have a job, and I could be doing something good for the kids. And then more people could be going to the church and tithing more. But I don't know the whole situation. And I also believe in that we don't have to have a separate beautiful little facility for every little thing. We can shift, we can look at our facilities and use all of our resources. Because a lot of our buildings here are dying too. And I'd like to see those come back to life, a lot to come back to life. Thank you for your time.
Does anyone else have something?
My name is Denise Pramit, and I'm not a Waddleville resident, I'm a Sydney resident. But I took your asking, you're talking about you'd like to see where that thirty-four thousand dollars would come from. And you have to consider, I'm from Sydney, and I know a lot of people that are, nearly four hundred people at the church? Yes, not often, a lot of them.
How many people here are of the majority? And how many are not?
And so that illustrates that, what's that, what is that generating for Waddleville? I live in between Sydney and Augusta. I could choose to shop in Augusta, it's a same distance. But because my interests are here, I have a child at Tinsel Academy, so I shop here in Waddleville. I go to church here in Waddleville. Expanding brings exterior, which generates money because we're spending money. I'm gassing here, I'm going to shop and save here, or Hannah Bird says, "I'll shop and save myself." You know, I do most of my shopping here because my interests are here. And I think expanding this building expands the amount of people that are coming in, and it generates income, even though it's nonprofit. You talk about POMs and COVID. Yes, you're not getting money. COVID's huge, you know, that's a lot to gloat at, you see that. But you've got those kids spending money here, you know, which generates income.
The problem there is it does help the taxpayer, it helps businesses.
Well, it does help the taxpayer because Waddleville has a lot of lower income that you're having to deal with. And they need jobs. And when we spend money here, that keeps the jobs here, which does help. And eventually, hopefully, with this kind of community, it grows them. So hopefully they can start buying up the properties that are for sale all over this place by growing the community. And I think that's important. You have to look at that income coming in. And the inputs is grow families, so the families can step up and buy your buildings, you know, go to your colleges, and progress in the community. Because you're heavily burdened, both the north and the south end, you know, that's true. You know, the rental properties, you're still getting income because people that own those buildings are paying taxes on them. But I think our job is to grow in those areas. I know that we concentrate in those areas, to grow that, to build Waddleville, and that's what this is about. And we know you can't calculate this thirty-four, but I guarantee you, people are spending money in this town because they're coming through stereo fees. There's two hundred business school academy, parents are driving from all over, and I guarantee you, they're buying groceries and they're building that town, and that's important, you've got to look at that. So it's a business in a different kind of sense, but it's still generating income for business.
Thank you. Is anybody who actually lives in Waddleville, wants to...
My name is Seavey O'Pon, I live on Titanic Street.
Absolutely, I'm talking to you.
No, we're not, yeah. I'll try to be quite free and safe. I want, I would like all of you folks here, both Waddleville residents and non-residents, to understand that you have to help us solve this problem. That you can't just boil it off. There are solutions at the state legislature that you could look at and say, this formula needs to be changed. This needs to be put into effect. We are in a very, very difficult situation. It's not your fault. But I think it is your obligation to help us create a solution. We have businesses here who contribute to the economy in all sorts of ways, but they pay taxes. In a sense, if you're to resurrect the whole thing, if you're not part of the solution, then you're part of the problem. And I think that people obviously can fill this room, which seldom happens. So if you could bring that message in an organized way to Augusta, to the legislature, to your legislators, and say, "Help us find a solution to this issue. We do this real and hard, and it's going to get thirty-four thousand dollars harder." So I'd ask for your help, okay?
Thank you. I'm going to run for our word six. I guess I want to reiterate this is a zoning issue, not about going to the legislature or to the state, oh, look, I'm also need to do in that area, this is a zoning problem. So if you're going to vote based on, we're on a tight budget right now, which we serve in the act, or we're saving a lot of money and we're on a tight budget, and we have payers who are on the two dollar threshold, I guess that's a problem if we're upset. We still have this nonprofit, the church, the nature of the right, developed there. It's not a zoning issue, the zone problem is a zoning issue, I mean, they should build the building. You know, they might still be on the table.
My name is Charles Reagan, I represent twenty companies, I'm a Waddleville resident. I'm actually here for the tax assessment item, but one thing I thought I might just bring out is that I'm also working on developments right across the street that we're probably classifying. And I can say, subject to permitting, with a high degree of confidence, that there's going to be new development in the next segment that's easily going to be taken away from taxes. I don't know how you want to quantify that, it's obviously it's subject to permitting and leases, but in all likelihood, there's going to be development that is easily to be taken away from taxes.
I personally think we should table this with the Capitol Council. I'm not exactly sure how I would vote on it tonight, except that I would like. I mean, I work for a nonprofit, so I completely understand the work that they do. I have time to attend their church and they speak to a lot of it. I also want to stop calling it a church, it's a school. And they're educating children. And so as a part of that, things that this was the Georgia State National School of Health School that needs to expand, I don't think you need to argue with them. Because it's a school. So I just want to be careful, just, I... I think that it's a zoning issue, and it's a school, and they're educating our children, and they're doing a great job in the community. So we have to look at it as a zoning issue. Which is hard, because then we get yelled at all the time about, you know, there is a tax issue in the city. But I think if I was voting tonight, I would have to vote yes, because they're doing good work in the community and they're giving back to the community. And it sounds as though the bowling alley was tried on a liar, and so they don't work. And I don't want another empty building sitting in our city. And I really would love to see more people coming in and enlarging their church and do more work in the city, I think it's going to be a yes.
I'm going to stick with the vote.
Do you make a motion?
I make a motion until the next, I mean, we...
I think we've had quite a bit of discussion here, and the same people will keep coming up all over the building. Let's move on. Because this is about a church, they've outgrown the space. You've got two hundred kids going to school here. I'm happy to hear that. Let's move on.
I just want to respond to the one panel brought up all this on Paul's school. I would very much have to have a church, and they're completely different.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of table on this? All those? So, till the next meeting? This motion is tabled before the next meeting?
Does that mean there's no further exceptions?
Tonight, no further exceptions.
I have a question of privilege. And that is, in the motion, it should have been stated that this is being tabled and then discussed at the next meeting, and that wasn't part of the original motion. So I believe that you need to...
That wasn't in the motion?
That was not stated as the motion. After it was a motion and then second, that was not stated, that was stated after.
We have a problem there, that's not happening after it. It's expected by virtue of what we do at every single meeting, that discussion resumes at each following meeting. So there's no need to make that statement. Discussion will be made at the next meeting, just as it is at all meetings.
Okay, that is it. I'm going to move aside. Bogdan's, I don't think he's in line, he has twenty-four.
Number one fifty-nine, dash two zero one four. Do you read by its title or...
All those in favor?
An audience provided for amendment to zoning, Article Two, Section Two, Dot One, Dot One.
Second? All those in favor?
I have no managers to report for report.
If there's nothing else to fill before this council?
I'm sorry that I was late. I just do want to say, I appreciate everybody who came to vote. It's a Sunday, we have a ball. I'm sorry that I wanted to make a... I took yesterday off work.
Congratulations.
I want to thank all of the holders, and I just want to thank your work and all of the work that she did to make sure that an election that ran very smoothly, there were lots of people coming out and registering. And I really appreciate all the heat that people had, and the fact that people came out and voted. And I'd like to also thank the Congress chair for being there. Thank you all.